Five thirty, so a call to order this special meeting is Tuesday, April seventh, twenty twenty at five thirty P. M. Here, Carl, give me a roll call, please.
Councilmember Remley.
Here.
Ronan.
Here.
Bunzman.
Here.
Reif.
Here.
Johnson.
Here.
Bunzness.
President.
Olson.
Here.
Rux.
Here.
Mayor Shoneman.
Here, please stand with me for the pledge of allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the United States of America and to the Republic of America. We are indivisible, indivisible, and eternal.
We have three speakers signed up for our open forum, and why don't we start off with that Fallon, you've got the floor, you make your way to the podium, hopefully Ron's stuff won't be in your way. Make sure that little green light is on at microphone so that we can hear you.
All righty. Okay, as stated yesterday, again, thank you so much for taking the time to have the open forum and allowing the public to speak. Thank you for all of the considerations that you've already taken, and I went through yesterday's statements as statements, and I just wanted to gain a little bit more clarity today, so before I get started, I want to thank the Aberdeen public for whatever support they've shown, whether it be to the curb side, or the delivery, or for the endless calls that keep coming in to schedule appointments, that we've informed them that we will likely be closing, and that we were respecting the decisions being made at the council. Rob, I want to thank you for your patronage to Revive Days Bar. I know that you've been a guest of ours, and I appreciate that, and so I don't want to give any wrong ideas to anyone listening or watching, but I do want to gain a little bit of clarity. The first meeting, we talked a little bit about the economic concerns of salons, was that, is that accurate?
This is the form, I think this is your opportunity to talk.
Okay, I do have some questions in here, so if you're, if anyone's willing to share on that, that'd be great, if not, I guess we'll kind of wait for that, but from my understanding, from the first meeting, the concern was the economic standpoint. And then in the second meeting, around minute seven fifty-four, Rob had a, had an amendment that he said he was introducing the second, wanted to introduce a piece of the second on his own behalf, and he asked the city attorney for input on that piece. I think that we can all agree there's both economical and there is also safety concerns. We've, from the first meeting, we adopted, as I stated last night, the executive order of Governor Gomes, and we have made, adopted new protocol, and we have followed that very closely. We went to the second meeting, which was last week, and we adopted everything there, we took, we took the approach and the position as if we were going to close, and we let our guests know that, we created scripts, we have signage everywhere, and we have respected that. We've adopted the measures, the safety concerns, and agreed that what we have done for the, I'm not really sure where we're at at the economic standpoint. Yesterday, I stated the concern, and since then I've talked to a few of the councilmen, I stated the concern around the economic piece, and although the safety piece is absolutely the priority right now, and we are one hundred percent behind you, because this city is full of small businesses, the economic piece, I think the small businesses are just looking for a little bit of support, partnering, and help. We have taxes coming, and today's the seventh, so in twenty-three days, property taxes are due. Talked a little bit last night, or yesterday, about the, with the finance reports, when I think Bunzness, or can't remember who asked about the reports, about income tax, and how that's affecting it. So, when I've asked generally to the public, or to authorities, what's going to happen with those pieces, are we still going to be expected to pay those pieces? It's almost like we're mocked, or laughed at, well, you'll absolutely have to pay those pieces. But as small businesses, when we're mandated to close, it's not even given a second thought. We just slip in at the end of the meetings, oh, we want to amend this, we want to add that, I second that, I make a motion, very little discussion, and now we're going to have the next emergency meeting. So, if we can gain a little bit of clarity, I think the purpose, and really the motive and the objective, is to come together, because we are all in this together. We're not trying to be the rebels, we're not trying to go against what, what the safety concern of the community is, we're simply trying to work with you, but we're getting no feedback. The economic concern is an absolute concern for many people, and as we know, as the GDP falls, the unemployment rises, and when the unemployment rises, disease and infection rises. Now, that might be a little longer term, but if we don't start considering it right now, we're going to have this lasting a whole lot longer. In the first meetings, we talked about two different approaches that we would take. We would take a more lenient and a more strict approach. We would follow Governor Gomes' guidelines, her executive order. It seems like we voted on the second, the second option, that was more lenient, but we're putting all the wording, and we keep changing it to be more strict. I'm not, I'm not, again, this is not about being right or wrong, this is about being in this together, and so tonight's vote will likely go in the order that I, I think it probably will, and I'm okay with that, I'm not upset with that, just asking for a little bit of guidance and compassion. So with that, is there anything any councilmen have to offer from the economic standpoint, and what those proceedings are going to look like? Any suggestions or solutions with property taxes coming due to the small business owners that are being mandated to close right now?
Thank you for, for your comments. I guess for me, the property tax thing is not really a us thing, that's actually the county, they, they control that through state law, that's their domain. I was thinking about your words yesterday, and there, there's very limited things I think that we can do in that regard, except maybe waive late fees for, you know, your water bill, those types of things, due to this, because they're really, as far as property taxes and all that, and sales tax, you know, that's the state, and all these other things, that really isn't really controlled by us, and I, and I understand that there, there are people that are going to feel pain out of this, and, and it does distress me, because I think Aberdeen was really starting to move in the right direction, but Avira has twenty-six ventilators, and it's only so many ICU beds, and to me, we need to, that's what we need to think about, because if that's overwhelmed, you know, we, if you read the news article today, they're already looking for certain sites to use for overflow for the hospitals. That's what we're trying to prevent, because if we can get through this, and hopefully much quicker, if cases don't go down, or cases go down and, and things start improving, like, you know, New York, they think, and now they're starting to get over the curb, then, then we can open up, and hopefully, everyone is going to be appreciative of those businesses. In the ordinance tonight, you could still offer, I, I just looked at it, you could still offer sale of items off, you know, not, how do you say, you know, shopping in the curb online, what is it, making T D O products for off-sale, sale off-site under some conditions, so it, it's, you know, if someone comes and needs shampoo, I know it probably doesn't help a haircut, but I still maintain that, you know, the quicker we get through this, the sooner we can open up, and the ordinance we worked on yesterday will provide us, you know, hopefully the ability to as things improve, we can release some of the restrictions faster than this process of meeting twice a week, and making decisions based on that. But don't sit there and think that we don't feel your pain, we hear the people, the business owners who've been calling me, all this other stuff, they, they realize that they hope this is a much shorter-term solution than a long-term solution, and like I say, but for us, there's only so many things that we can do, we can't, we don't control your property taxes, you know, we don't control the sales tax you have to pay. So, like I say, it's just, there's things, but there are maybe some things that we can do, maybe waiving some late fees for utility bills, but like I say, it's one of those things, and of course, we're going to be hit on the sales tax end also, because people aren't shopping, and so that's going to impact our budget, no different than the state with Kristi, you know, like Kristi Noem has said, that they're going to have to come in June and basically slash the budget, because it's going to affect the state, which will affect all of us in South Dakota.
Mayor.
I didn't catch who that was, is that?
Bunzness.
Oh, Dave, go ahead.
So, you know, I'm, I think at least we should have the administration come back to us with what we can do and what we can't do regarding, not, in my opinion, eliminating property tax, but deferral of property tax, and that would include who we need to talk to regarding that, state laws that might help us, and state laws that might not help us. I think it's, it's something that we need to be aware of, because I think we are asking a lot of our citizens, and I don't think this would be across-the-board deferral, but if people are in economic hardship, I think it's, it's upon us to look at every option to help those people. So I'd ask the administration to do some legwork and help us understand what we can and what we can't do, maybe what, who we need to talk to to see if there is something that can be done.
Thank you, Councilman Bunzness, and Josh, I guess, you've got a question, Councilman Reif.
Well, thanks for coming, Fallon, appreciate you being here. As Councilman Bunzness said last night, we're, we're not going to do this right, I mean, this isn't something we've done before. If, if this gets worse, we're going to be accused of not doing enough, and if it gets better, we're going to be accused of doing too much, and so we're in a tough spot. We all understand the situation you and other business owners are in, we've heard from a number of them, as, as Councilman Rux said, and it's, it's hard to hear, it's reality, and, and we're making decisions that affect people, but we're also hoping that by doing this, we can get back to normalcy sooner than later. This ordinance, and I know it's confusing, right, there's all these different parts of it, and amendments, and as you said, but this ordinance allows us to, or the ordinance we passed last night, I guess, and we'll finalize it next Monday, allows us to repeal parts of the ordinance quickly, and your next question's probably going to be, well, when's that going to be? And I don't know, I mean, I really don't know, I hope it's soon, but we did that with the idea that as, as things on the, as situation on the ground changes, we have the option to be nimble, and we can get out of this quickly, because we understand that you're in a tough spot, but like you said, we, we're going to err on the side of safety, and I, and I don't know what else to do in this scenario besides that.
Thank you, Fallon, if you've got anything else, move along to the Ivies, we really appreciate you coming in.
Absolutely, I appreciate all of you, and I do appreciate the proactive measures, we are absolutely doing curb side, we are going to do delivery, we're going to do everything that we can, and like I said, ultimately, we're going to respect whatever decision the authorities make, I thank you for considering it, and just remember that we are all in this together, coming together with being proactive and moving forward by working together is the goal, both for the safety and for the economical best interest of everyone. So, thank you all.
Thank you. Fallon, Ivies, would you make your way to the podium, please?
Mayor, Mayor?
Yes, sir.
Could you please just try to clearly announce to people that are speaking, it's somewhat, sometimes hard to understand.
You can need to move the microphone.
Oh, to myself? Sorry about that. Next, we've got Len Ivy with Ivies for Hair, going to speak on the emergency ordinance as well, so Len, take it over.
Good afternoon, gentlemen. As Fallon was saying, we kind of are all in this together, but I will say, this morning, I woke up, and I had kind of a sick, uneasy feeling in my stomach. No, I'm not really sick, but knowing what you gentlemen have to make a decision tonight on my future, my family's future, and my wife's future, and our business future. We've been in business for forty-two years, not one day have I missed in forty-two years for being sick. I did miss a couple of weeks last week, or last year, for a knee replacement, first time, I about went nuts. We have, and I sent you all an email here this last week, and, you know, I'm not going to bore you with all of our sanitation practices that we do, because there's really, we're second only to about the hospitals and the clinics around here, as far as what we have to adhere to for our sanitation practices, because we are licensed by the state, we are governed by the Health Department, as the cosmetology board is, so I'm not going to bore you with that stuff, because we have basically gone over and above, beyond the call of duty, tenfold what we would normally have to be required to do. And I could sit here, and I could give you all kinds of facts and figures about the coronavirus, and all the populations and that kind of stuff, and you have all your own facts and figures also, but there is a couple that I do want to give you, and that is, the governor said that we could have up to six hundred thousand people in South Dakota infected with this, and that number just kind of boggled my mind, because I'm thinking, good grief, that is three-quarters of the population of this state. So then I brought it, brought it, and, and broke it down a little bit, and I'm thinking, well, they're saying that this curve could flatten by mid-June, maybe July, and it start going the other direction. Keeping that in mind, for the next ninety days, if that were to happen, we would have to have six thousand six hundred and sixty-six people a day contract this virus. Now, you and I both know, this is a pretty big, sparsely, you know, populated state, that might, that seems a little unrealistic to me. They also said we have two hundred and eighty-eight cases in the state, of which ninety-one of them have been, have been cleared, have basically gotten through it and, and cured from that. So really, we only have about a hundred and ninety-some odd cases, with two eighty-eight total. For the last six weeks in the salon, Kathy and I have had this discussion with, I can't even tell you how many people. We're so sick and tired of talking about the coronavirus, we're so sick and tired about the daily things that we have to do to maintain this, because like you guys, I'm sure, we all want to get back to normal. I know you gentlemen think that you're going to take care of us in this community, but if you look at it, I think the community has taken care of itself. The CDC guidelines that they have given us, we've pretty much all abided by, and maybe we've thwarted off some of the ramifications of all of this virus. So, if we think it's going to go away by shutting down our businesses, and some of the other smaller businesses, I think you're all kidding yourselves. It's not going to go away until it goes away. Shutting us down is probably, in my opinion, because of our sanitation practices and how we approach, is one of the, probably the least ones that should be shut down. Yes, we are a one-on-one business, and we have daily contact with people, my hands look like lizard skin because of the washing before and after, the sanitation practices we have to go through. However, I kind of feel like if you're going to decide tonight our fate, then maybe we should take it a little bit further, and maybe take it more of a level playing field across the entire city, because right now, the restaurants are pretty much closed, I understand casinos are going to be closed, massage therapists are going to be closed, nail salons are closed, everything, but yet you can still drive through Wendy's and get a hamburger. Well, let's just think about that for a quick minute. If you think that that's going to save you by going through a drive-thru, you're sadly mistaken, because the money you give them to pay for that is going to be automatically given to the car behind you in exchange. Now, you can drive through these, and you can see some of these people are wearing rubber gloves, but you don't see them taking them off and putting them on every time you give them your card, or you give them your money, because they're protecting themselves, but they're certainly not protecting us, driving us through the, the drive-throughs. I went and made my last deposit today at the bank, at the drive-thru. The young lady behind that, she didn't have rubber gloves on, I handed her my deposit, she took it, she gave it back to me with a receipt, and of course, I took my sanitation that I have on my dashboard, and I used it, but I did not see her do that. So if you think by having these open, that it's going to protect us, I think we're all I think we've gone almost a little too far playing with the coronavirus, because it's taken it to the point where it's not a, it's not a coronavirus pandemic, it's a fear pandemic, because what's happened with this is everybody, mostly in the government and in the media, has caused this to be such a pandemic, that the fear of the pandemic is actually causing more problems and more illnesses than the actual pandemic itself. Maybe not right at the moment, but you're going to see this down the road. The decision you guys make tonight are not going to affect just a few hundred people in our industry, you're going to affect thousands. Not only the, and be honest with you, there's only a couple of us that are guys in the beauty business in this town, most of them are women, but it's not just the, the people that are standing behind the chair or doing the nails that you're affecting, you're affecting their families and their children, you're cutting off their income, you have, you're going to affect the lives, and you're going to create bankruptcies, and you're going to affect a lot of financial runs, not in just our industry. Retail business as a whole, as you all know, is down sixty, seventy percent in most cases. One of the things that came out two weeks, or yesterday, or a couple of days ago, was last week, two weeks ago, excuse me, that the suicide hotline calls were up three times, they were the week before. That's pretty serious in my book, that's something that we all have to deal with. What's it going to take to keep somebody from having to do that? It's pretty difficult to think about. The federal government has given us all kinds of options that we can apply for, the EIDL programs, the PPP program, the unemployment programs, that sort of thing, well, you all know how that works, how long we have to sit and take to, to wait for these things, these processes to take place? I've already applied for the EIDL, I got my number, I called my bank, and guess what, I'm like four hundred and thirty-fifth on the line, so you know, I'm not going to get it in the next few weeks. The other one is the twelve hundred dollar check that's in the mail, we know how that works, might get it, we might not. Because I'm a salon owner and self-employed, I don't get unemployment, never paid into it, I've been self-employed for forty-two years, I've never paid into unemployment. Gentlemen, if Walmart can take and limit the number of customers that they have that walk through that door, and they can keep the aisles going in various directions to keep the situation where people can keep their safe distance, so can restaurants, they can limit the number of people that, and they can spread the tables out so they've got the separation, so can some of the other businesses, because drive-throughs and curb-side services, it's not fixing anything, it's just keeping those businesses hanging on for a small, little miniscule amount of money that they're used, or, you know, used to getting. It's not enough to keep them in business, it's certainly not enough to keep us in business, that's for sure. And I know I've listened to a few of you say that you have talked to a few doctors, and they're very concerned about this. Well, I've got a few doctors for clients, and I've talked with them also, and we're all concerned about it, but I don't know the doctors that we have in here, if they're experts in infectious diseases, because that would be the ones I would prefer to talk to, not my local surgeon, or not my local gynecologist. Because see, I'll tell you a really quick story, but when I kind of close this out, and this was, happened to me many years ago, I fell and I hurt my shoulder, and when I went into the walk-in clinic to get my shoulder looked at, and the nurse ushered me back to the X-ray room, I got the X-ray, she put me in the little room, the doctor came in, he felt my shoulder out a little bit as he was looking at the X-ray, and he walked out. He came back about five minutes later, and he looked at my X-ray again, and he felt my shoulder again, and then he walked out. About five minutes later, he came in with this brace apparatus to put on my shoulder, he couldn't figure out how to put it on, and what he did is, he apologized to me, he says, you know, I'm really sorry about this, but, you know, there's four of us that own this clinic, and I'm a urologist, I don't know anything about your shoulder, I've been talking to my buddy, that's the orthopod, and he's telling me what to do. So what I'm saying is, is God help all of our doctors, and yes, we're all very concerned about it, but if I'm going to listen to doctors that's going to tell me how many beds we're going to need, and how many ventilators we're going to need, I at least want them to understand, or want them to know that they are specific of that business, that they're not going to be the one operating on my knee, or the one that's going to be taking my tonsils out. Thank you, gentlemen, for your time, I hope you consider changing this to keep us open, because it's a tough business. At least give us some idea how long we have.
Len, while you're here, why don't you tell us a few of the procedures that you go through to help prevent, spread the virus, I know that you had mentioned a lot of those in the email, but just to have it on the record.
You know, the way we, the way we normally follow the procedures without this, is that at the end of the day, we have, we have to sanitize, we have sanitized combs, brushes, scissors, razors, you know, anything that we have used gets sanitized at the end of the day. We have capes that we use that get sanitized, they go to the laundry. We still do that, except now, it is before and after every client that walks through that door. We wash our hands prior to the customer sitting in the chair, we wash our hands after the customer leaves. In fact, we have, in our building, we have an accounting firm that's right next to us, and of course, as you know, this time of year, they're pretty busy. Well, they lock their doors, and they have a big box out in front of their door, but there's a, there's an outside door, and then our door. Well, about three weeks ago, Kathy was looking at that and saying, good grief, they have fifty to about a hundred people a day walking in and out of there, so we thought, this doesn't make sense, we're out there, every client wiping, wiping down the door, so she took and opened that outside door and left it open, so now, we no longer have all those people touching the door, only our clients. Every client that walks out with our door closed, we go over and we clean the door, we clean our desk, I clean the cash register card machine that they have to sign with their finger on. We wash, I said, wash our hands before and after, everything is sanitized, and we use a product that's called BarberSide, which is a hospital-grade disinfectant that kills even the AIDS virus and that sort of thing, we have that everywhere, we have sanitation, sanitizer like this everywhere, so we, we can't do anymore, I mean, you literally cannot do anymore than what we're doing, outside of trying to cut their hair with someplace, you know, where we have to stand away. So, the other thing is, is that we have, one of the things we also quit doing to help with this, is we all know our clients, you guys know your guys as hairstylists, you've been going to them for a long time, yeah, well, okay, all right, most of you. One of the things that I can say with us, we don't just know you, we know your families, we know everything you do, because you tell us. So one of the things we haven't done, that Kathy and I at our salon, is a couple of weeks ago, we quit taking new clients, because we don't know where they've been. Our clients, we do, because they tell us. We've got a lot of clients that came, that are coming back from down south right now, every one of them has called us and said, before we come in, we'll make sure we wait our two weeks, because they don't want to affect our family, as we don't want to infect theirs. So there's, there's definite things that, that we have done, but I can't think of anything more that we could do to protect them any more than what we are. I can tell you this, it's way more than what you get when you go through the drive-thru at McDonald's, it's way more than you do when you go to the drive-thru at the bank, it's way more than you go to when you go to your chiropractor. It's way more than you go to when you go to your chiropractor. It's way more than you go to when you go to your dentist.
Thank you, Len.
Thank you, gentlemen.
And I would like to say that I'm very proud of how well the citizens and the business community have stepped up to take those type of preventative steps to protect themselves and ultimately the vulnerable people in our community from this, spread of this virus. So I appreciate all three of you, uh, coming in here tonight, tell us about your side of the story. From there, we will move along to the discussion and possible second reading and final adoption of emergency ordinance number two regarding the novel, novel coronavirus COVID-19 public health crisis. Um, I guess we passed first reading last week. Ron, tell us where we're at, and you had some additions to be made.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Administration would recommend that the council approve second reading tonight of ordinance number two, emergency ordinance number two. I do have, in light of Governor Noem's, uh, recent executive order that was, that was released last night, I think it was posted to her website last night, uh, some changes to the recitals portion of ordinance number two that would not substantially alter the substance of the amendment, but some minor changes to make sure that, uh, we are current with the recitals language. And, uh, I don't know, once the, if, if a council, if the, if a motion is made to approve second reading, I'd, I could put up the amendment language at that time.
Take such a motion?
Move second reading.
Got a motion from Ronan and a second from Rux. Why don't you show us that language?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor, I have that on the screen, and I know that the council members, uh, viewing by Zoom will not be able to see this, but I will read this language. Uh, it is in, it would, this particular paragraph would be inserted, uh, right before the last recital paragraph, the last whereas paragraph, and it reads as follows, whereas Governor Noem on April 6, 2020, noting her authority under the Constitution and laws of the state, including STCL Chapter 34 dash 48A, and recent projections of the potential demand upon hospitals due to the spread of the novel cor- coronavirus in South Dakota, issued Executive Order 2012, 202012, which order rescinded the directives of Executive Order 202008, and mandated that the prescribed social distancing and CDC hygiene practices shall be followed by every South Dakotan, all employers, any enclosed retail business that promotes social gatherings, all healthcare organizations, and all local and municipal governments. And that language would be inserted right before the last whereas in the, in the, uh, recitals portion. And the second would be a clarification, uh, which would be after the seventh whereas on the top of page two of the document, where we would, uh, clarify that a state of emergency was declared in all counties in the state, and then add this additional language, whereas Governor Noem on April 2nd, 2020, issued Executive Order 2020 dash 11, declaring a disaster to exist in all sixty-six counties and nine tribal reservations of South Dakota, and that federal resources are needed to alleviate the impacts of the pandemic on the state of South Dakota. Those are the two whereas recital paragraphs that I would request that the council, uh, amend and add to the, uh, ordinance. Neither of these would substantially change the substance of the ordinance, because they are simply recitals and not the action portion.
Move the changes prescribed, uh, as described by the city attorney.
Second. Motion from Rux and a second from Johnson to add two recitals as, um, as explained by city attorney. Carl, can you give me a roll call vote on making that amendment? Councilmember Remley?
Aye.
Ronan?
Aye.
Lunsman?
Aye.
Reif?
Aye.
Johnson?
Aye.
Bunsoness?
Aye.
Olson?
Aye.
Rux?
Aye.
Mayor Seanman? I motion does carry, that will be added. We'll open it up to discussion on the possible, or on the second reading, then. Does anyone have anything to contribute? Councilman Johnson?
Uh, I appreciate the guests tonight in the gallery who provided, uh, open forum comments. I think this was an important dialogue to have, and, um, I think it is commendable and impressive, the thoroughness and the conscientiousness that is devoted to, um, meeting and even surpassing the CDC guidelines. And I would like to ask the question among the council, uh, can we really say that we have greater, um, concern with this specific, um, type of business than we do with other retail establishments that we allow to operate? I think that's an important point to consider, and I would like to propose therefore an amendment that we, uh, delete paragraph five, if you could scroll to that, Ron?
I'm there.
Which addresses, um, the beauty and hair salons, barber shops, and spas, and other similar personal care facilities.
What's the amendment?
What's that?
What's the amendment?
To strike, uh, to strike paragraph five. And leave the rest intact.
Anyone on Zoom care to, uh, provide a second to that motion, please? Anyone in the room?
Just for clarification, if I second this, it opens it up for conversation? Is there, is that correct?
That's my understanding.
Yeah, I'll second then, to have the, to have the talk.
Got a motion from Johnson and a second from Reif. Have you got some comments on the matter? Mr. Reif?
I, I don't want to get too piecemealy here, but, um, I, I do feel that the salon owners do do a good job of sanitation. And to answer Alan's question, am I more concerned about them than I am drive-throughs at local restaurants? Probably not. But there are some parts of that, that I, that I maybe would make an argument about, and that would maybe be, um, for instance, massage therapists, uh, when you're hands-on and you're very close for, say, an hour. Um, if that person were, was infected, if that person is infected, the, the massage therapist, and it's going to be really likely that the person that they're serving that day, or the multiple people that they have appointments with that day are also going to be infected. So there's parts of this that I could, I could see your point and say, yep, I, I think, I, I think you're right, and there's other parts of it that I, that I'm going to struggle with. Just my comments, thoughts.
Councilman Ronan?
Thank you, Mayor. Uh, you know, I too would like to, uh, to thank Ms. Helm for coming here again tonight, and Mr. and Mrs. Ivy. Uh, I have no question in my mind, but that they, um, exceed the requirements, uh, that the Department of Health places on everyone in their business. Uh, they both got terrific reputations, they, they keep clean, um, facilities, uh, and I was, uh, pleased to hear about the extra measures that Mr. and Mrs. Ivy have, have Mr. Ivy's suggestion that we should be getting our, uh, medical data, uh, from people other than, um, physicians who don't work in infectious disease, uh, is something that I was mindful of. Um, I, I happen to have a friend who is an epidemiologist, and, uh, so I have, uh, taken her counsel on these things, and I asked specifically about this type of business, a hair salon, barber. And, uh, the, uh, what she explained to me is that the problem isn't merely, uh, hands touching somebody's head, or somebody's body, or, or touching their hands, it's, it's respiration. Uh, this, uh, this, uh, virus is airborne, and when you breathe in, uh, you take in, uh, respiration, and that may be somebody, or you take in air, that may be somebody else's respiration. Uh, and if you are working in close contact with somebody for fifteen, twenty minutes, half an hour, if they've got a lot more hair than I do, uh, you are going to have plenty of opportunity to, uh, to exchange, uh, respiration with, uh, with your clients. And it is there that the, that the real danger occurs, uh, in the type of business that you folks are involved. When we did have physicians here, uh, one of the things they, they indicated is that you wanted to avoid, um, being within six feet radius of someone else for more than two minutes. In your type of businesses, it's impossible to avoid that close contact. Um, you would need, you'd need a really scary set of scissors, uh, to, to give somebody a haircut from six feet away. Uh, it just doesn't work, and it, and it isn't what people do. Um, so, while I am, um, sympathetic, uh, to the, uh, economic, uh, concerns, um, I think our real duty here is to help, uh, preserve people's lives to avoid the, the spread of this, uh, virus, and so I cannot, uh, support the, the amendment, uh, that my friend, Mr. Johnson, is proposing. I think we need, uh, these restrictions, and I know they are going to be painful, uh, and frankly, there are many, many, many facets of, of our business community that are, that are suffering from this, uh, and, uh, Ms. Helm is right that this is, uh, this is going to have lasting effects on our gross national product, uh, throughout the country and locally. Uh, but I think, uh, this is our duty to, uh, to preserve life, uh, to prevent the spread of this, uh, illness, and, uh, so I will be opposing this amendment.
City Attorney, uh, Olson here. I got a question for our city attorney.
Councilman Olson, we can hear you.
Um, I want to know that, uh, trying to remove this particular section, uh, I didn't think we could do that until we have a second reading on last night's ordinance number three. I thought you told us that it's either all or nothing type of deal.
Councilman Olson, this, this particular ordinance, uh, is on for second reading tonight. I would tell you that the effect of, uh, eliminating paragraph five would be a substantial change in the amendment, and would require another five days to intervene before you could do, uh, final adoption. So you would push, uh, if you were to, uh, re, uh, take out paragraph five as part of, uh, the second reading, then you would require another, another hearing five days from now.
Okay, thank you for that clarification. Uh, well, that's just adds another reason, uh, why I oppose, uh, removing this. And I appreciate these folks coming in and speaking, uh, from their hearts, but, uh, I think we have concluded through our medical experts, that we are in a critical and dangerous timeframe right here, and we need to exercise all of our abilities to stop this outbreak. And if you cannot maintain six feet separation, uh, we, everyone in the country says that is the best defense. Uh, we just have to support that, be strong, and, and make these mandates. I just feel very strong about this. Uh, I, I don't want anyone in Aberdeen to, uh, fall victim to this virus, and I hope when we recover from this, that Aberdeen stands out as being one of the least affected communities in South Dakota. I, I hope and pray that that happens, but there's no way of knowing that right now. And so, we're left with this task of, of trying to protect the public, and I just think it's very important at this time to stand firm with what we have established in this ordinance, and, uh, and try to help our people. Thank you.
I'd like to add a quick point of clarification. Councilman Ronan addressed the fact that he believed that this was an airborne illness, and according to the CDC's website, it is not. Uh, any other comments before we take a reading on the amendment that proposed by Councilman Johnson?
Yes, Mayor, this is Dave.
Oh, Councilman Lunsman.
Yes, um, you know, as much as, uh, the two that spoke to that night, they, I don't doubt that they're probably cleaner than, than most people and, and probably some, uh, healthcare facilities, I'm not sure, but, uh, the problem is, is taking this, this, uh, paragraph out, where do you start? Um, if you go to some of the other paragraphs, some of those businesses probably would have an easier time to stay six feet apart and also sanitize. I, I mean, you either dismantle it all, or we don't dismantle anything. It, it's unfortunate, but I think that's where we're at. Um, all, all of the experts that, that supposedly experts are saying that if we want to get a handle on it, we have to get a handle on it immediately. If we don't, um, it's going to be a much longer term that we're going to have to deal with this, and that's not something that I want to do either. I, I have many people that are in these businesses that are family members, that are friends, and it's not an easy look in their face and say, I'm really sorry, but, um, we have to pass this. Uh, for those reasons, uh, I will have to oppose removing anything from this, uh, from
Councilman Bunsoness, you have not spoken on this topic, do you have something to contribute?
Um, I am not in favor of the amendment, cost us another five days. Um, I haven't heard an argument that, um, leads me to believe that they shouldn't be included, it's a physical distance issue, and, um, I did, uh, visit with, um, two doctors personally, and then we heard from a couple doctors, uh, outside of that, um, one was a hospitalist who is on the front lines of having to deal with this, will be on the front lines of dealing with it if it becomes an issue. Um, you know, they're, they're finding out more information about this always, um, all the time, um, from their, um, people that they know from, uh, the, the coasts, and the other was, uh, an OB-GYN doctor who also has to be knowledgeable on this, because, uh, coronavirus just doesn't, uh, affect people that are not having babies. Um, and we did have, at that point in time when we were talking, one, one case of someone that, uh, was expecting that had coronavirus, so, uh, just because, uh, they don't practice in infectious diseases, uh, doesn't mean that they're not knowledgeable on how this is going to affect them, and they are concerned and worried. Uh, and I'm just, at this point in time, it's about protecting our healthcare system. We have limited amount of resources that, uh, can take care of a, um, even a very small, um, uptick in, um, serious cases in this, in this region, because we're a reg, we're a region, regional base, so I, I do not support it, and, um, I understand, empathize, sympathize with individuals that are affected by this. Um, I have stated that I have clients that have been affected by this, um, which affects me.
One more comment.
And so, um, again, it's, we need to talk about how we can alleviate the pain on the council level. Uh, the federal and the state level has already done that, so take it, um, please contact the people that can help you, bankers, and, um, let's, let's get this over as quick as possible, and the only way we do that is physical distancing.
Councilman Ronan, one more comment?
Oh, thank you, Mayor. I don't wish to get into, uh, to a, an argument with the mayor on how this, uh, how this disease is spread, but I, I would like to read from the CDC website on a page called "How COVID-19 Spreads," and it reads, "The virus that causes COVID-19 is thought to spread mainly from person to person, mainly through respiratory, respiratory droplets produced when an infected person coughs or sneezes. These droplets can land in the mouths or noses of people who..." These droplets can land in the mouths or noses of people who are nearby, or possibly be inhaled into the lungs. Spread is more likely when people are in close contact with one another within about six feet." So it would appear to me that the kinds of businesses we are talking about are the ones that do put people in particular risk, both the providers of the services and the consumers.
Thank you, Councilman Ronan. Cargamuff, vote on the Johnson amendment, please. Councilmember Rux.
No.
Olson.
Mute.
Olson, no.
Bunsoness.
No.
Johnson.
Aye.
Reif.
No.
Lunsman.
No.
Ronan.
No.
Remley.
No.
Mayor Shawman. Aye, motion does fail. Next, we've got further discussion on the final adoption of ordinance number two. Does anyone else have anything additional to add before we take our vote?
I make one comment, Mayor.
Councilman Lunsman, you've got the floor.
Real briefly, I've pretty much spoken my piece. I know I have a lot of people that are in families and friends that are in business, and this decision has been very difficult for me, as well as I know it has been for all of you. The only thing I want to pass on is that hopefully everyone remembers their faith that there is hope. The sooner we get this over with, the sooner we get to move on with our lives the way it used to be, and probably better. We need to make sure we remember those that are elderly, that are really shut in more often than we are right now. Make sure that we do contact them, phone call them, Skype them, do whatever we have to make sure that they are remembered. Make sure that we take our guidance so that we can make this ordinance as short as absolutely possible, but also making sure that everyone is safe as possible. So with that, I will get off my soapbox, but let you all know that everyone on this council I know cares about everybody in this city, and are trying to do the very best with the information that we're given. Thank you.
Thank you, Dave. Anyone else have anything to add before we take a vote?
Yes, this is Mark Remley.
Oh, Mark, go ahead.
I'm wondering, were the parks closed yesterday, correct?
Playground equipment on parks, yes.
How about Lee Park Golf Course? Has anybody, are we closing Lee Park as well?
I believe Lee Park Golf Course remains open. Plenty of space for social distancing. I don't believe that the clubhouse is open.
No.
So Lee Park is not closing? Is that what you're saying?
The course itself remains open.
Well, we mean open, the clubhouse will be closed?
Yes.
And so people will still be able to golf?
Yes.
At Lee Park? Without memberships, or?
I believe they'd have to have a membership, but I don't know the details.
May I interrupt, please?
Pardon me?
May I interrupt?
City manager, Lynn Lander, of course.
I would like to read some of the policy guidelines that deal with Lee Park Golf Course. The clubhouse is open, however, there are no tables and chairs, there's no hot food, beer, pop, candy, chips will be handed by you as an employee, and bathrooms and door handles are cleaned every hour.
Okay, so we are...
There's no tournaments, there is no league, and one person to a cart, no touching the flagstaff's sticks, and flagsticks must stay in a hole, so they're following CDC guidelines for open space areas, and with the distancing.
Okay, so Lee Park remains open, and I'm getting some comment from constituents about that not being fair to them, and I just want to make, can we address this later, at a later meeting, when I can come to a city council where I can hear? I can't hear much of this right now, and I think we need to address this. There are people that are, beings were keeping Lee Park open, it seems unfair to them that we're closing everybody else down, and the city is keeping Lee Park open. That's my comment, and I will vote yes for this, but I think we need to address this at a later meeting. Thank you.
Thank you, Mark. Anything else from the council? Otherwise, Carl.
What comment? The golf course operation has fallen under the authority of the park board, not the city council?
Thank you for making that distinction. I've seen quite a lot of correspondence on the...
Excuse me, this is Mark again. So what do we have to do to address the park board? I mean, they've closed all the other parks, and this is a city park, and we need to address this in one way or another.
You're incorrect by saying that they closed the other city parks. They only closed the playgrounds. The parks are actually open?
What about, is Wiley Campground open?
Yes, it is.
Okay. All right, I'm done.
Thank you, Mark, and thanks for the information. Lynn, Mark, I'm sorry that I mistakenly informed you that the clubhouse was closed. I thought that I had read that, but I was incorrect. Carl, would you give us a roll call vote on the second reading of COVID Public Health Crisis Ordinance Number Two?
Councilmember Remley.
Aye.
Ronan.
Aye.
Lunsman.
Aye.
Reif.
Aye.
Johnson.
Aye.
Bunsoness.
Aye.
Olson.
Aye.
Rux.
Aye.
Mayor Shawman.
Aye, motion does carry. Next, we've got new business discussion and possible first reading and passage of resolution extending emergency ordinance number one regarding the novel coronavirus COVID-19 public health crisis, and I will remind everyone, my understanding of this is that we may as well let this thing term out, since the new one will be in effect.
I move to table indefinitely.
Second.
Is that necessary for a motion? We can just not take a motion whatsoever?
Actually, it would be best, I would advise that the council simply take no action on the motion. I withdraw my motion.
Withdraw my second.
Sounds good.